I want to make a change to the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We got 6:30. All right. Your roll call. Let's go down line here. Mayor Tammy?
Here.
All right, Heyer in here, Weaver?
Here.
Bart Garber?
Here.
Torres, absent. Mr. Wilson?
Here.
And Mr. Riley?
Here.
That's all we have, because lock is off now.
I'll make a motion if you see that.
Okay, I'll second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Also Dunsmore.
Oh, Dunsmore's not here also. All right, adoption or amendment of the agenda. I think Mr. Wilson, you had something for them?
Yes, I have, I want to make a motion to put it under new business number two, and it's the extension of hours for the marijuana preemptive actions. If no further changes, I'll make a motion to give up the agenda presented.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And she carries on then. Okay. Meeting minutes from January 22nd, everybody have a chance to look over those. Actually, there aren't any corrections.
Just one word is spelled wrong. That's number eight, and it's written like the number A, and it should be proposed. P O S, P R O S E. Just spelled here.
I need to group minutes, if there are changes.
It's amended.
All right, Ms. Garber supports, so all in favor? Aye. All opposed? All right, we don't have any citizens comments today. I haven't seen any sheets. How are you?
Good.
Do you like to say anything? Go ahead, just sign in there. There's a sheet there. The, I'll take that. You have the sheet, Krista.
All right.
Do you want to speak at the meeting, or are you just?
Oh, I'm not going to speak, no. I'm just here to.
Thanks for stopping by.
Okay, moving on, Secretary of Communications, you had in your packet there, we have the drafts. For the land use map and a template. I have a blank template, so. Is that Mr. Weaver for the parcels? The other templates here?
Just some different things of the.
Add years.
McComb Planning and Economic Division produced.
Okay.
Just give us an idea of some of the information available. While I would share them.
And then everybody should have had a, in our packet. For license for information only. From letters in regard to BMJ and engineering and permits in the detention bond. So we can discuss that.
I had, that's just information only.
Yeah, just info, that's what I said, just communications, so you know it should be in your packet if you don't have it.
Yeah.
We can make a copy of it.
Yeah, we don't really have to. That's not on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you. New business. Item number one, public hearing, commercial overlay zoning extension.
I'll make, well, there's not too many here, but I'll make a motion to reopen the public hearing on this issue.
And support? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Okay, you, can, did you got there tonight?
I don't know if I got a.
If you don't, I have, I have the, I have the map here.
This one here? This is what I have, is this what you're looking for?
Uh, yeah, that's what I'm looking for, okay.
Okay.
Can I, can I just express what kind of what happened? I guess we can see, well, why don't I get up there and point it out? I don't know how to do that.
Press the button that's there.
Well.
But if you'd like to stand, have that.
I'm not, I'm not very good at technology. That's, we're kind of, we're foreigners, we don't get along at all. But anyway. Okay, in, in 2012, we did the master plan. Can you work it down a little bit? I've got a lot up here.
Oh, yeah, you want to break it down?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh, you have.
Sure, okay. All right, in 2012, we did the master plan, and then the master plan zoned only the, the lots adjacent to, this is M19, and this is on the east side. And we zoned it to commercial overlay. And, and then in 2015, what we did was, we changed the zoning to the master plan. Now, what is happening, and our assessor is getting inquiries of some property on here that would be accurate, which would be, could you put it to the commercial overlay, it could be, what's not in there? But what's happening, the parcels themselves consist of, boy, that's right, consist of more than, more than one, more than one lot. So what's, and so they, they want to put something in there that's adaptable for that C1, commercial overlay, they can't really do it, because only the lot adjacent to M19 is available. So what they're requesting is the owners and the parcels that own more of that in the parcel. So what, what they're requesting is that this, this old area then re-zoned, same commercial overlay, C1. So that kind of outlines where that goes and includes the whole parcel. So that's what, that's what we were intending on doing. So that kind of explains, hopefully, if there's any questions, we'll try to answer them.
I can make a big hand if you want. If that helps.
So we have a total of seven parcel numbers?
Seven, we have seven parcel numbers, that's correct.
And they're all included?
In that, in that dark area there, yeah. And like I said, the whole area on the adjacent to there, they're all, those lots are all already zoned C1 commercial.
So this is all the, all C1?
What their assessor's requesting is the whole, whole area that includes the, all of the, these parcels include, right here, they include all the.
These two here?
Let me ask you a question, Larry, just to confirm, because I want to make sure I understand this as I'm trying to verify our zone.
Sorry, I don't have that.
Oh, that's all right. As you can see here, Larry, so I knew that we had these parcels involved here.
Yeah.
Which is going to be all commercial overlay. So you're saying that if I'm coloring this map in, by zones, and so I want to come all the way down. I just took a picture of that, it's all updated, but so we're gonna, some of these, some of these parcel numbers are included in this area here also.
Yeah, it includes, that includes, what's, the adjacent ones are done, but what behind that?
No, I understand that, I just wanted, I just wanted to be clear.
Include that, all of it, and that includes all of the parcels.
Right, so if I color, if I color this map in, like that one is there, I've got it to here, but I wasn't sure if we're talking about this parcel and this. I knew there were seven.
Yeah.
I specifically don't know, I don't have a, you know, a parcel map of all the numbers, cross check it, I don't, I don't have the capability of doing that, and my, lucky I can get a partner out there.
Yeah.
But, as I see here, that's, that's good, so right, right to here, up to, almost to Maple Street, I'm going to color this in orange too. And that's good, that's all commercial overlay now, all the way up to these last two lots on the north end of town.
Yeah, it'll be all commercial overlay. And same, when we did the master plan back in 2012, we were just considering the adjacent lot.
No, I understand.
To the M19. And of course, people are inquiring to the assessor, and maybe putting something in there.
And that's great, so I want this zoning map to be accurate.
Yeah.
This map.
Saying, what they're saying is, they're like, they need, just the adjacent lot is not enough. And of course, the parcel's owned by an individual, and obviously, just, you want to sell the whole parcel, you don't want to sell just the adjacent lot.
Yeah, sure, and just more opportunity for somebody to do something on it too.
Absolutely, yeah, so that's, that's what this is, that's what this is. So, any other questions? If there's not, I'll close the public hearing.
I don't have any issues with it.
Okay.
No, thank you.
I'll make a motion, and then we, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Support.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Okay, I have, I'll say, I'm taking notes, too, so thanks.
If you need a moment, we can, you can take a moment.
Okay, and I suppose was, who made the motion to close it?
You did.
You made the motion.
I supported.
Kenny's not doing it.
Yeah, who supported it?
I did.
Okay, all right, now we got it. All right. Now, I got the motion, how I want to word it, do you mind if I make the motion?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'll make a motion that Memphis Planning Commission make a recommendation to the Memphis City Council that be approved extending the commercial overlay district to encompass the entire parcels of the seven parcel numbers. You want me to list them, or say them, or can I just say, I'll list as presented, or?
Yeah.
Okay. Then I'll list that as seven parcels.
We've published a couple times.
Yeah. Okay, that's, that's my motion.
I'll support that.
Good. Barbara, support?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
And who, who supported it, by the way?
I did.
Okay. Okay. It just says I did.
He writes faster than I can.
That's, that's because they taught writing back then.
I still like writing, but. My nerves aren't 100% yet. Getting there. Okay, anything more on that? We'll move along. Item number two, extension of the cannabis hours, public hearing. And then, Larry, you want to take the lead on that?
Yeah, I, I saw that wasn't on the agenda, and I met the council, or three last council meetings, recommended this country to the planning commission, and to hold a public hearing. And the Mystic Cannabis is requesting revision to our ordinance, extending the hours in the evening. And what they're requesting is flowers, that, you know, we don't, it's not the planning condition, we don't have to necessarily go for those hours, or let them in those hours. But Monday through Friday, through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Friday through Sunday, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. And their current hours are 9:00 to 8:00. So what we have to do, I don't know, is, that has to go into, in the paper as well. So I talked to Amber today, and she must need to do it, so I'll make a, go into a paper. But now, we want to have a date for the public hearing, and I'm looking at the calendar, I think we could schedule it, get it in the paper, and have it in there 15 days. And so I think we could schedule to the, I put the date on here, yeah, March 12th, Wednesday, March 12th.
Wednesday, March 12th.
You say that isn't going to be open.
Well, this.
Yeah, I have it here.
Yeah, they have something scheduled here, so we need to find.
So I will have to, I started rewriting it, but I'll rewrite it, and I'll, and I'll check with Bob at the Lions Fund and see if we can't hold it over there, okay?
I sent Amber Bob's contact today, I don't know if she'll arrange me back, but I did give her that information, so hopefully she's gotten hold of, or him.
Okay, you better, you better call Bob and send that.
No, Amber called, and I gave her the information.
Okay, all right, hold up.
So they really want to mark it as a tentative, March 12th, until we hear back from?
That's our regular plan.
That's the regular plan, we just need to find location. Okay.
Okay, so it's, I'll make a motion that we, then we set public hearing on for Wednesday, March 12th.
All right, I'll second that. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, set at 6:30, March 12th.
Okay.
Larry, make sure it's on the website as a public hearing as well.
Yeah.
Make sure Amber puts it in on the website, too.
Long as she don't ask me to.
Huh?
Long as she don't ask me to.
No.
I think she'll pull it down there if we ask her.
We just have to ask her, so that she can.
Yeah.
Email the, notify the web designer that he'll. Put that on there.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Awesome. All right, moving on with that, going to unfinished business here, we have the review of the master plan. I did download it, I did put it on Dropbox for everybody to take a look at it. Steve. So I got that in there, the draft that we had. So we need to go, go over that. We have the new, we have the other maps, I downloaded those also.
We'll have a planner at the next meeting, and Terry at the next meeting, I think, so I'll be able to brief that when I am.
Okay.
You know, I've got given you all the information I've had several times, so I don't need to go through that again.
The planner will be at the next meeting, is that your saying?
Yes, I anticipate, the planner and Terry, who is fifth class, I don't know, October, November.
She's.
I'm pleased for help to get a draft put together, just to start it, she did, but she has done that outline that's in there, and her advice is to make sure that things are all correct. She's going to pass all that information on to her planner, the planner was approved for the city council to help out with that matter, so we're going to put it in her hands. I asked her to be here tonight, but she had a prior commitment, so I said, we'll try to shoot through the very next meeting, and we'll hear from both of them, and then the process should move forward. I always open ideas, how to make it move faster, I don't have any more ideas, I don't know how to do that.
No, I tried getting all the person that she gave the information to, I left.
Sorry, I talked to her last, and that's where I got that stuff.
Oh, beautiful.
From down there in person. And they're very willing to help with a number of issues, actually, they'll help us with all of the, the master plan for the parks. We should have an economic master plan, we did a whole, we need a whole lot of things for going into this, it's just something we've been working over years. But I'll leave that in more capable hands than mine.
Need a little bit more on it. Because I got the land use map, and I liked, I liked your idea on that, and I see we just got the draft done, we just got to.
I'll give them all kinds of good maps.
Yeah. I saw the templates, the more the better, I mean, yeah.
San Donald has a lot of, Southeastern Michigan, so it has an awful lot of data, but you can do street maps, many of the things. I got, backed off my story, and then they have a nice little satellite app that they can form there too, which is.
Is that on your chart there?
Yeah, I'll throw it over real quick, just to show you. You just did it for me for.
Yeah, I'm trying to bring it up. Just a little.
People will have a reference, you know, absolutely, also, gives you sat map with the.
Can do just.
Parcels on it, you know, so you kind of.
I like that idea, getting that, putting that on there, all of the parcel IDs.
Well, that's, that's another layer, you know, I did go to McComb County and St. Clair County earlier in year, and did get maps that had parcel numbers, you got to do it in both counties, of course, that's one, that's the other. But I made those available, but the folks in Austin don't want to have that, and they said, you have to print those up for us, and put them on the wall for our new office when we get to that point.
I'm trying to find out where I put it at. I just had it, I just.
Yeah, they just put, they just put streets on there, just giving you a few examples, you know. With that technology, they can do anything, it's grand, you know, works. Yeah, me too, that's why I went talking to them.
Larry, we even got telephones without wires now. We even have telephones without wires.
You ready to share? This is what we have so far.
Yeah, Terry did include all, you know, we've done, I personally have done a lot of rewriting of those sections, and we went through those here, and gave everybody a chance to look them over, and made corrections, additions, deletions, so we have a lot of the text on, that's just a general outline, you know, she wasn't going to print up a bunch of stuff that we didn't really need at this point, and all that information she is going to pass on to Kazlov Planning, the company that Karen LeVere runs.
Miss, but there is a air dome map, we can use the template there from 2025, and then incorporate it in there.
You can move around through them anywhere, once we have all the information, that's why we really hadn't produced a draft there, because we didn't have it.
Well, what are we missing? What are you, what is your outstanding items?
Maps to get in there. I think, what is the other rewrite, I don't think we have that much more to rewrite.
Section 8's on Dust 8. Photographs, introduction. And I'm sure Karen has some other items that she's going to point out.
I do have, I think we have some photos. Come on, come on the area.
It's going to get there, you're coming, you're coming to a free point.
Here's the thing, we should have a, a list of what we need. We can't just keep coming in here saying, we still need, we still need some maps, we still need this, we still need that. We need a list.
Is there anybody that wants to, that wants to have taken more pictures compared to what we just have right now? I mean, I just have what's, what was sent in here, what sensitive info, that's all I have.
I can just generate a list, anyway.
I mean, I even put a request on it, this Facebook page, photos, you know, if you have photos of the city. We have some of these are the photos that I've gotten so far. So I'm going to make that bigger.
That's what I'm saying, you have places that says there needs a photo there, like, pick a photo, put it in there, like.
I'm gonna.
We can't just.
Is Tammy available this, I didn't, I'm not doing anything this Saturday. You know, if, Tam, Terry. Because if not, I'll get in contact with the chief.
She's passing all this off to a professional planner.
Okay.
She thinks that is, like, we need to go at this point, and I'm going to listen to her advice.
Okay.
I've reached the end of my abilities, I'm happy, Tammy, you want to generate a list out of, I mean, all the information's out there, I've presented it many times, I'm sure I missed some things, there's the outline that Terry presented there with all just the basic categories and headings. As I said, most of the text has been rewritten. So I'm open to someone generating a list.
That's just a general statement, most of the texts are rewritten, this, you know.
Well, it's one, I'll, I'll, well, again, I'm, I'm happy to entertain new ideas, I'm out of them. I just give everything.
There shouldn't be any more new ideas, it's like, we should, it should be cut and dry right now, what are we missing? What do we need? And let's get it in there and put it in there.
I need a professional planner to tell me what we want.
Why do you need a professional planner to tell you what you need? If you have a draft.
Because I don't know.
You have blank flats.
Wait, if we're missing something.
I can't, I don't have the ability to do that, I don't have the ability to go lay it out, move photographs around, and.
What you're saying, what you're saying, Steve, what you're saying, Steve, that you basically got everything here, now it's left in the plan, and they do put it into the.
Draw it all together, make a rough draft, yeah. I don't know what else to do.
It just looks like you're perceived by.
Done everything that I can do. Somebody else wants to jump in, makes a list, review what I've done, and what the other upper members have done over the past few years, I'm all ears. I don't have any new ideas on how to proceed, you know, only what I've done, so.
Anything?
I'm honest. Fresh out ideas, I've got people lined up, I've tried to get people to help me work out of it, no more than I do. Gone from having no one doing it here, we are a part-time council, or rather, a part-time commission, and I appreciate the work many of us have done over the last two years to do it, there's a lot of things that went into it. But I don't have any else, I don't have anything else to add, you know, whether it's.
Just getting.
Text, or weighing out, taking photographs, or anything like that, I just don't have the ability to do it. I'm, I'm the first one to say, you know, I prefer the people who know more than I do, I don't know what else to do, but I'm, I'm all ears.
We discussed this in the past, in the last few months, about, about getting a printed copy of what we have so far. And that was supposed to be given to us at the last meeting.
She provided an outline, but she has.
And we don't have it.
Terry will fully explain what she has done up to this point, and she has many reservations about going forward and being the one responsible for having her name on that plan. One of the reasons she said, I want a professional planner to do it, there's a lot of issues here involved that we just can't gloss over. Hell, no, just produce something to produce it, adopt it, I mean, even some of the things that we've done in the past, not legitimate. I'm not going to beat that horse again, but I'm, I'm erring on the side of caution here. And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not an expert on it, nor do I pretend to be. I spent an enormous amount of time talking to people who know more than I do, going into the county offices, going into county officials, talking to other government officials, trying to get a better idea of it, and then conveying that idea to my fellow commissioners here, and seeking out the advice of people who could actually put this together, so that we have an absolutely fine master plan that people can look at, who want to come into the city, and know that there are no second guesses, is this a draft? Is this current? Has this been changed? Is this reflecting? I, I need someone to check all that and do it, who knows what they're doing.
Checks.
Again, that's, that's, that's my last word on it.
Well, who are these, we've been paying somebody, we've been paying.
We haven't paid anybody a dime yet, well, except for Karen, she, she produced, she actually researched, and I wouldn't be surprised if Terry just ends up donating her time, to be quite honest, which I, I think is more than gracious of her. She's got 49 points some hours into what she's done so far. Karen LeVere, I asked for $500 for her to review the road issue. That's how we introduced her into the, what we're trying to do, because there's so much confusion between what our ordinances say, and what our engineers are saying are acceptable, and that still has to be resolved, and that is an ongoing issue. But she did that thoroughly, and analyzed all of the ordinances with the master plan, with the county ordinances, with some, to get to the bottom of the road issue, which Larry, you made a point of, of bullet pointing those very well, that those still need to be resolved. So that's where Karen has, has come in, I don't think she's built a check, because she said she still had a couple hours left at her rate that she wanted to expend before she even submits, so we have to spend a dime.
Well, what does the road stuff have to do with the master plan?
You got to have, you got to have a, an accurate expectation of what the outlines are for what you need to do in Memphis if you want to build something, and that should be included in part of our master plan, or you should be able to refer to it in our ordinances.
This is a plan, this is a, where we see our city going in the future.
There's a lot more than that. There's a lot.
You're making it a lot more than that. You're making it, like, you've got it, you've got it so.
I'm happy to hand that off, if maybe I'm, I'm taking it all too seriously, maybe I'm.
I think you, I think it is, I feel, you know, I mean, I'm not saying we're not going to put out.
You mean direct it in another direction?
We're not going to put something out there that's not, that's untrue. I mean, if we went, if you guys have gone through everything.
We have.
And why? Then what are we doing? That's what, we keep coming in, and all we're doing is.
Tammy, I'll, I'll work under your direction, however, whatever you want to do.
But all we're doing is talking, every, I've come to so many meetings, and all we're doing is talking.
Listening, what do you want to do? Give me some homework, give us all some homework, what, how do you want to go about it?
I haven't seen anything, I haven't seen anything.
Have you seen?
In the last few meetings, I have not seen anything.
Well, I don't tell you. I can't explain my position anymore than I have, I'm just repeating myself.
Right, but this, we have nothing tangible, like, we need to have a master plan, we need to know. You guys said that you went through everything, now, I wasn't here the last year, so, you know, I just came in, so.
We're running out of zonings from 2015. We're down to section 8 implementation matrix. We're down to section eight implementation matrix.
Tom, you mentioned at the beginning of the meeting that you had something on Dropbox. You had a draft?
Oh, yeah, I just showed it and I'm going to see if I can bring it back. I have it.
So why can't we have a copy of it, a, a hard copy of it?
Let me get some paper. I will, I will make.
All the text changes, you did get hard copies of it as we went through them one by one by one. You guys looked at it, you edited it, you read it, and you signed on on it. They're still there though, Barb. I mean.
I'd like to see a draft, a master plan.
Somebody make it happen.
That was supposed to happen two weeks ago and it didn't happen.
She produced an outline.
An outline.
She did not feel she had all the information according to her standards, not mine. Her standards. As somebody who's done this in other parts of the state and done it at, at a professional level, she did not feel, not only she did not feel she had everything that was necessary, but she's very hesitant to go any further.
So then we don't have anything. We don't have anything.
Just the twelve pages of, just those twelve pages.
If you call, if you call everything that myself and the people have done to this point, no.
Well, where is, well, where is it? Let's see it. Let's see it in writing. Let's see this stuff in writing.
Yeah, okay, let's see it. How do you make it happen? I don't know. I don't know how you would.
What do you mean, how do you make it happen?
You're talking about what she had so far. That's if it was up on the board and it's just.
The twelve pages?
And section.
The Dropbox is full of all the work that we've done. I mean, it's there in it. You know, ask, you can ask Amber, and I say this in all seriousness, for our clerk, print up everything that we've done on the master plan for the last two years. We got two years, two years' worth of meetings. We got two years' worth of minutes. Ask them to produce that. We got clerk's office. They can produce.
Well, there's nothing in the, I've gone through the minutes. We have this person that we allegedly hired to put this all together. And, and she, and it's not happening. So why isn't it happening?
We only just brought her in, Karen, to look at that.
Not Karen, no. I'm not talking about Karen. I'm talking about this Terry.
We haven't paid her a dime. She hasn't. That was in October.
The last one that we did.
So she came into this barely two months ago and only to try to.
That's the clean version. It was like dated in June of last year.
You know.
So basically.
Correct. That would be all of the text as it was written and submitted to me.
I still don't know what.
That one I can, that one I pulled up. That thing that said fifty pages.
So that was going through the old master plan and updated everything.
What we were doing is taking the one for 2015, we were making corrections on the paper. And then we started getting it a little bit more electronically involved. And we redlined the areas. And with those red lines, then those were the corrections that needed to be done. And they were made.
Okay, so what, what was?
So the latest updated version is in June. That was the clean version that we started working, that we were, when you say clean is it was updated.
So it has the text as updated, but it has the old photos and layout.
Right, all photos and layout, correct.
All the new text.
So nobody's taken that version and done anything to it since June?
That is, that is my understanding.
For Kenji?
Yeah, the one that, that we updated in June. The, the June, uh, first, 2024, clean, showing that all the red lines were taken out and all the corrections were made. That's the one.
Well, there's a difficulty in adding another thing that Terry helped out with. She couldn't open up her documents.
Yeah.
So she retyped it all and she made new charts, which I appreciate that, Kenny. I mean, you did a lot of work updating, getting the 2020 census data in. To begin with, nobody even thought we needed to address this master plan. Just, you know, just stand it and let it go along again. But I, I saw that we really should be looking at it. And this is a new process for me. So Ken took that project on and did a very good job with it. And that was part of the update that, uh, you know, Terry was helping with, but as I said, she's, uh, she's, she's handing it off. She doesn't, she doesn't want to work on it anymore.
Tom, what's that document labeled in Dropbox, the fifty-page thing?
It says, uh, Memphis hyphen, oh, here, let me see if I can get the projector back on. I don't want to. Overheat it. This is what we have right now. Once it wakes up.
Just read me the name of the file. It's telling me.
Memphis hyphen, right here. Full master plan six, one twenty-four. It's a PDF. And this is all fifty-eight pages of the master plan that Ken scanned and we got it. How are the voodoo that you do? Got it, we had it converted and we updated the Word document and then saved it as a PDF. Ken's a little bit more versed in it than I am. I tried messing with it and I made.
Well, scroll, scrolls from what?
Yeah, let me just.
We didn't touch introduction because that was a summary of the following sections. So really, section.
Right.
Starting in section two is where you'll see substantive changes.
This need to be updated. So we didn't mess with the introduction. We redid section two. And Steve and I redid, was it four that we did with the?
I don't know. I don't remember. I, I just know I've pretty much been involved with all of it.
I tried changing this and then I messed it up. I just left it.
John Terrace also worked out a section with me too.
Yeah.
But like, so all these words, is this all updated or not?
Yes, this is done.
Yes, as I mentioned, the text has all been gone through except for section eight, to my knowledge. I'm not going to.
New to 2020, this has all been updated.
And they've all been converting to a Word document. And they've all been labeled to correspond with various sections. So that's just a copy and paste when the, when the, uh, the rough drafts put together. They have all of that.
I feel that could be removed, could be added.
I think when you had the meeting and showed this, the only thing, the only thing you had was that you had areas where you had to put in the pictures and put in the changes. I think everything else was pretty well done. Is that correct? I mean, when you, when you were here last, when you had that plan here last time, you just had to.
That was just to give an idea of how the, the whole thing will come together. Now, once you're sitting there like with a jigsaw puzzle and you got all the pieces, you know, you sit down and you put it together. Most of the pieces are there. But somebody has to put it together. You know, as far as the, the actual construction of the document itself. And having the mass that are going to support it, they need to be on the table too. The introduction needs to be on the table.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Like, we, we should have a draft and say, this is what we're missing. What picture do we want to put in here? You know, we need, we need.
You know, Tom's the planning commission chairman. I'm just sitting here as a rep from the planning council. I'm, I'm here to convey information from the council and vice versa. I've gotten way more involved than I really need to be. So I'm setting the math for this right now.
We need to be more action oriented because this is, is unacceptable, how long this has gone on.
Well, remind you, the last one took three years to do. So, you know, we're still ahead of that one. So I, I'm all for it, you know. Tom, it's, it's, you and Tammy can figure out a new direction. Take, start from scratch again. I'm just here to provide.
We're starting from scratch on.
No, I'm, I will print this up. I'll give you a copy of it. I can print it up.
So, I mean, I just don't want to keep coming here to a meeting and saying, well, it's just about done and we, we have a few missing pieces. And so what are the missing pieces? Like, we need to know what the missing pieces are.
Maps, some text, introduction, holy.
I need a detailed list of what the missing pieces are.
I prefer him to, to Tom to let him direct it. He's, he's the chairman, not me.
So, and the planning commission, like, we need everybody to be involved here because the last few meetings, we've had people sitting here not really doing stuff. Like, you know, I don't have hours to sit over here and, and just waste. I don't want to feel like I'm wasting. It's like, this is something that.
This, the, the play, the master plan was actually put on hold for a time because of the new development. That took up a better majority of our months. And we're still going with that. So we, but one thing is a back burner.
So.
No, but trying to split the time between the two and what's, you know, what's need to be taken care of on.
But if you don't know what we need, then it's never going to go anywhere if we don't know what we need. So we need everybody's input here, but we need to have something that we can look at and say.
Can everybody give me something, either by text or by the email? You have my email.
Well, if you, I, I'm being told that you have everything. So what?
I have photos. And then I have some maps. I'm going to try to get that one. And I mean, I got the aerial view, but how much, I will. Otherwise, I'm just a little overwhelmed right now. You guys are throwing a lot of junk at me and I'm trying to get it straight here. So I'm just going to go home tonight. I'm going to go through everything. And you and I will just touch base.
Well, you need to print out what you have and then.
I'll print it out. That's it. I got it.
Let Amber do it. Done it. Let, let them print it out.
All right.
Yeah.
I'll send it to them. I'll send, I'll send it to Amber.
And they can print it out. At least we have something to start.
I'll print out what we have from Terry right now. And I'll print out the, the June first, 2024. What's that?
Everybody, right.
For everybody. I'll get, you know, I'll get everybody a copy. And then I'll have it delivered. You know, I'll have, uh, PD delivered, at least everybody can go over it if they see anything that needs to be updated, changed.
Well, and then we have something to go on and say, hey.
Something concrete, absolutely. I know Barb wants our copy. Larry wasn't, at least we'll get him in the loop. That's perfectly fine. I'll get it sent over to Amber tonight.
Because then you can make a detailed list of this is what we need. Who can, you know, who can get this, who can get this? And assign things. And then we can get something put together.
All right, and that's what I'm doing.
I mean, I don't even care if it's a Word document and we might have it all written.
I'll print up what we have from you.
Then we can have somebody professionally do it and put it in. But, you know, if we don't have all the stuff, we're putting the cart before the horse here.
I'll get it printed up. I'll get it, uh, voted over to her. I'll do that as soon as I walk in the door. Not a problem. All right, anything else? We're going to move on from that right now. I will, uh, I'll get the emails over to Amber and I'll have it printed up. So everybody has a copy of what we've done so far and what Terry has, the preliminary in regards to the pages that she has already created.
That would be helpful.
So I'll do that.
There's my business. So we've got my email. I'll email it. We got our copy right there.
Yeah, so text me or email me any suggestions. It'd be fine. Everybody has a Dropbox login, so I know Larry's, you know, not technic, not, uh, not much with technology.
Well, but the Dropbox has too much, too much stuff in it. It's, there's just too much stuff.
It was, it was getting organized and I was starting to put other things in there. But I'll get their hard copy. Let me just write that down.
Yeah, that's my starter review.
Hey, Tom?
Yes.
There's the work that was done by Terry in the Dropbox.
Yes, yeah, it's in there also.
And what's that like for that? Is it easy enough where I could see from Terry or?
I put it in there and I don't know why I didn't upload it. So I'm going to put it in there. What I have it listed as, right now it's Memphis, Michigan, new. Right, so I'm going to pull that.
And that's in Dropbox already or is that one?
I put it in there, but for some reason it didn't transfer through. So I'm going to put it in there into the file here. Memphis Planning Commission. This is the area that you want to go into. I will put it here in the master plan.
Okay.
That's where I'll move it to. Okay, we'll do it right now. See if it's going to take it again. All right, got that done. Can you move me on? Any other, any comments from any of the commissioners?
We're over at the end of the meeting.
I don't, I would say right now I don't have anything more on the mess. I'm going to get that going through. So I'd rather spend the time at home on the laptop.
No, I just can't, I don't have anything else on the agenda. It's going to go in front of me.
Oh, you didn't have anything on there? All right.
Yeah, we're in comments section. Yes, I did.
Okay, good. That's where we're at.
As a representative to the planning commission, I want to make the folks that are aware of the planning commission, which many of you probably are already, that we're going to have a, a lot of hard work ahead of us to get to straightening out phase one and phase, propose phase two with the condominium project. And that's going to be, uh, it's going to require all of us to be pitching and doing the best we can so we get the best results for all the parties involved. Basically, I'll give you my recollection of this because I've been involved with this since 2021. There was packs dropped on my desk when I was chairman of the planning commission in 2021 for this condo project. Prior to this planning commission, I'd been involved in that. Because this is going to sort of end up on the lap, planning commission. At some point, probably sooner than later. Uh, there was never a pitch for a conceptual plan to the planning commission. It was never requested review of the application. There was a lack of information required for our condominium ordinance statute. The McComb County Condominium Planning Office, Mount Clemens, they have their Plan 501, their number 1231, that the county shows a detention plot as must be built. Last time I checked for any additional amendments to that plan, I found none. That was Tuesday, last Tuesday. There hasn't been any approval to start phase two. And please, you may change my mind if I'm mistaken in this. I beg you to. I want someone to check my homework here. This is what I'm just giving you my impressions that I'm giving you as a council member as a pastor, the chairman of the planning commission. But I'm not going to state securing infrastructure permits, which they've done for phase two based on unapproved premise. There's unresolved zoning issues as a premise to begin constructing roads and utility infrastructure. That's what I expect to see coming down the pipe. That'd be a mistake. And it won't be an issue that's going to be easily corrected if we make it. If the city finds itself at odds with the phase one orders because we didn't follow our own code and our own ordinances, you know, if people are profiting out of this is once again the attorneys, which has been my experience with the last two major issues that we've had because we failed to do our due diligence. There hasn't been any final approval plans. There's no compliance with the building shortage. There's no pre-construction meeting. There's no public hearing on phase two as of yet. There's no final resolution on the road, which, which I mentioned earlier. Another area that needs those one. There's no funds deposited for reviews. There's no review by a professional planner or engineer or attorneys. And I just think the city's getting over its skis on this one. Memphis, the city and the builder are mutually obligated to follow all of our ordinances and all the laws of the state and county law. Regarding approach to resume these talks for the Memphis Meadows Village Condo Apartment Buildings. Now, I'm, I'm getting a feeling that there's pressure on us to get this done. To jumpstart phase two of the condominium, build that project on the Delaware Road, on the remaining eight point three acres. This leads to mistakes and it leads to lawsuits. They'll be allowed to conduct business in the city of Memphis. If they meet the requirements of our city codes and ordinances, they must also be in good faith as we must be. We need to have and finish up that commitment to phase one, in my opinion. They need to build that detention pond. They need to file the right away easements. They promised for four years. Uh, that's owed to us since 2022. Three years. Drainage, swales, pond prisms. This is going to be at the planning commission level, as I said, it's coming here. And we better be on solid ground going forward at this juncture with this issue. I'm not going to be intimidated. I'm not going to be rushed to action for any quarter until personal due diligence has been exercised on my part, which I've been trying to do. And I've spent an enormous amount of time doing that amongst other issues that have been around here. If I wasn't retired, there'd be no way I could have done it. We need to have the full council in force, our team, to make sure the second phase passes every single requirement of local, county, and state law. We should have our engineers, our professional planners, our attorneys at the table when we perform any discussions with state line. We should do this at regularly scheduled planning commission meetings in the public eye. I don't want to see any more special meetings personally scheduled for these purposes or people just don't know what's going on. We've got plenty of time at regular commission meetings for this. This is our business. We have thirteen new homeowners in this town. We've got a huge stake in the outcome of this upcoming process as well as immediate neighbors in our one square mile city, one square mile. Our allegiance is due to them and our citizens first. If we fail, we are liable to those citizens for mistakes made in policies or procedures which were bypassed. This is solely my opinion on the matter, as one who sat through four years of this with as many wrinkles and vagaries. This statement has nothing to do with any proprietary communications received from our attorney, either past, present, or to come. I have said as much many times in many public meetings. I've written several documents for the record and I have repeated them verbally, which can be verified as documented by Channel Six tapings of the Memphis Council and planning meetings. So you go back and watch all these meetings. So you go back and watch all these meetings when we get to those points, if you want to get the background out of it. That's home what we all should do. The quicker we can do that, the quicker this proposal can be fairly evaluated. And that's, we're gonna be the ones doing it, evaluating it. Phase one needs to be wrapped up. There hasn't been a final construction audit of that phase. That's in our ordinances. There hasn't been a building of detention pond. There's been no amendments filed with the county regarding phase one for the MCCP, which is the McComb County Condominium Planners, located at the Register of Deeds office, which anybody can walk in there and look at the records there. Further unresolved issues, we got the radius for the eagles of the streets. Chief Pratt has been concerned about that. Fire trucks need to be getting out of there, or the damaging of existing roads running over curbs, et cetera. We need to confirm these swale obligations, and I've been asking about this for years now. On the statewide prints, job number two twenty zero one two zero eighty-three hundred from twenty twenty-one, those benchmarks are on there. That information needs to, and that's all been included in our council packs. Everybody's, everybody's been getting them. I get them. I read them. You know, this reasonable right-of-way width for the roads entering, and the populating of the interior spaces of that condominium. You're talking sixty-eight more units they want to put in there. If you look at a map of the density of Memphis, it's a little ahead. So those are just some of the things that I wanted to, just as a courtesy and a heads up, and as my position as a council representative, these are things I expect to be dealing with at the council level, and it's gonna come to you at the planning commission. And the planning commission is going to have to resolve these, work with statewide builders, which I have done in good faith from day one. Mark Demille and, and Mr. Steba, I believe, is the construction foreman of that, to a number of issues that have come up through that. And I made myself available to them and to members of this body and members of the planning commission, or rather, the city council. And I cannot stress the enormity of doing this right. So I will leave it at that, and I hope that you hear what I'm saying. And we'll, we'll treat this with all the seriousness it deserves and not just be pushed along to get something done, rather than doing it right. Thanks. That's all I have.
You have a copy of it. Was that the one you sent me? Thank you.
And I'll send anybody a copy. I wasn't gonna make seven copies. I'm tired of making copies and they sit here on the table after I'm done. So I'm not wasting my paper and my ink to do that, every time I gotta do this.
Mr. Wilson?
I don't want to schedule another meeting. It's gonna be useless, but should we schedule another meeting to accelerate things on certain things from now on? If it's not necessary, well, we won't do it, but I'm just asking.
I don't, I don't want to do one right now. I want to talk with Tammy. I don't want on one. First, and then we'll go from there. All right, Barb?
I just had a question about, I think we have a couple vacancies on this planning commission, and wondered if the city was looking for replacements.
They have.
We, we have several people.
I think mine's, I think both are sitting there today.
Oh, hello.
That's good news. Thank you for bringing it up, Barb. Yeah, we need all seven people here. They're down to a tie vote. We really need, we really need people to step up. Thank you. I'm glad that's why.
When we say that at work, we always make people buy pizza.
I hope I didn't scare you off of my ramp.
No.
You know, it's government. It's tedious and slow, but it's our duty to do it right.
There's a lot of screaming at evil meetings. I get it.
I'm letting that tongue go on. Blimey.
That'll be at the next city council.
Wonderful. That's real goodness.
Mr. Riley?
Thank you.
No offense.
Ready to second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Emotion cleared.
Fair adjourned, seven twenty-four.